...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Can I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Dr. Harris, your report, please.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you tonight. And a few quick announcements that I would like to share. On January seventeen, the IDEF, the Diversity Foundation, will be sponsoring a screening of the film Bully. In the campus theater, there will be publicity that will be shared in the very near future with specifics. Tarpon will be our middle school and high school population, and our objective would be to have students attend the program with their parents. So please keep your eyes open, maybe put a whole mark in your calendar because it could be a valuable experience for our middle school, high school students and their families. We've continued our -- I'm just going to project and move on. We've continued testing on East Field. Initially, we had a round of surface sampling that had been completed, and then our next array of testing was to dig a little deeper and to re-escalate a number of test pits and additional test pits, which was just recently performed. We don't anticipate that we will receive results until the end of the month into the beginning of January because of turnaround time with the laboratories. But once that information is available, of course, the Board and Administration will share that with the public in responsible fashion, as we did earlier with the other news with respect to East Field. We are also progressing with the space utilization study. If you recall, early in this school year, Board and Administration had some conversation with respect to how we're utilizing our facilities, looking at potential enrollment projections, finding ways to be creative in how we utilize our space to identify if we can realize a variety of efficiencies, if it's how we deliver programs, if how we utilize classrooms. Dr. Saversky, who was commissioned to facilitate this study, has spent a large amount of time in district interviewing staff, personnel, site visits, the walk through the buildings with the leasing ground staff. He's held focus groups with staff that would be involved in understanding programming. He's communicating with realtors to collect data beyond the statistics that he would have available to him through other clearing houses. We, again, much like our East Field news, were anticipating that Dr. Saversky will have his report available in January, and those results will be shared in this forum, of course. Also, looking down the road, in the next month, we recognize that we're really going to be jumping into bucket season. And with that said, we all recognize the challenges that we faced in the initial last year and are not surprised to hear probably that we're going to be going down similar paths, having similar challenging conversations to evaluate what we need to do to deliver not only a high-quality education, to continue to grow academically, to provide high-quality services for our children, but to produce a responsible budget for our community. With that said, Ms. Milliner and I will provide an introduction to the process at our next Port of Education meeting, and in doing so, we'll outline our process, the timeline for additional presentations and discussion, which will continually be expanded throughout the process, but begin to recognize and forecast some of the constraints that we know that we're going to face this year. I think it's important that as we enter into this process that we understand constraints, rather than beginning to review things in isolation, let's look at the big picture, then let's break it down to the pieces and start to have a conversation about what those individual numbers look like, what they mean to us, and begin to establish the values and our goals moving forward in that process. But anticipate an introduction to this process in two weeks when we will take the next step and start to outline process and an overview for you. With that said, we have a couple of presentations this evening that we will be welcoming some guests shortly. Our engineering consultants from Land Associates will be here to continue our dialogue about Mizaros Field and improving our athletic facilities, as well as to look into a little project that they've been working on, of course, which is to address some of the traffic issues in what has been termed a traffic calming study. So we'll welcome them this evening to share their findings and provide information on both of those topics for the Board and Administration. Tonight, the Board is also going to be talking -- Lang, you could bring up that presentation. We're also looking at calendar, of course, a situation that has been a challenge for all of us.
Do you have a presentation there?
Yes. And I just wanted to take a second to kind of walk through the conditions that we're all facing and the impacts and the thought process that we went through. So when we go back to look at our unfortunate situation, October twenty-ninth to December second, when the hurricane hit, we recognized that we had an impact where schools closed district-wide for five days. With that said, there was a little insult injury in that Main Street was closed a short time thereafter, two weeks later, due to a broken pipe, which forced the closure to our school, and as we gave accolades last time, certainly could have been much longer had it not been for the prompt response of many of our staff members. So as we go through this process, we have to be mindful that we have a legal requirement. We have to provide 180 school days, which we should note include up to four superintendent conference days. So when we look where we are, as we walked into this school year, we had 179 days on the calendar, which was complemented by four superintendent conference days to bring our total to 183 days. In essence, that gives us, and to use the term "snow days," I think we all know what we're talking about, that provided us with three built-in snow days. When we look back historically over the past three years, we've averaged three days of closure for snow or other weather-related incidents. So we should have been okay. No one forecast sandy or the impact that it would have had when the calendar was constructed last spring. So to date, we've seen five closures district-wide. Keep in mind that little asterisk, that footnote out there with respect to Main Street having an additional closure. So with that said, we're in a spot where we have two days to make up district-wide. So to help you understand that, I tried to illustrate it in a different manner. So we went and we included the fourth day after the loss and see where it brings us. So we started off with 179 Dallas Lane Middle School and High School in the left column and on the right-hand side, Main Street School, and looking at the impact here. So we certainly need, recognize to get to that 180, Dallas Lane Middle School, High School needs two additional student days, and Main Street School needs three days. So we considered a variety of approaches, different methods to recoup these days. The first was a simple one, pick up the day. When the calendar was approved back in the spring, April first was identified as a day that would be reclaimed as a student day. On the calendar, you'll see that it's identified as a superintendent conference day. Instead of having just teachers only that day, it'll be a student-only day, or a student-instructional day, so that increases our numbers for one. Recognizing that we needed to still claim other days, we looked at what other options were before us. The modification of mid-winter recess, we've recognized the challenges that I've identified with respect to not only members of our community and their vacation plans, but also looking at our staff members that have obligations. We have to acknowledge that high school has a trip to Italy for the music program, and there's other programs that certainly complicate this. At the same time, we acknowledge that there's some advantages to this model, some continuity of instruction. We think we're out for a week in December into the new year, and we are to come back and have a mid-winter break, or looking at a short period of time of construction before we possibly then run into a long run without much of a break if we are to modify the March break and lieu of the February break. The one thing that to me is almost a calming factor to think that we're just heading into winter. We don't know what Mother Nature is going to throw at us, and there is that distinct possibility that those three snow days that I referenced before, that we've seen on average over the last three years, could present themselves, and we need an opportunity to recoup days down the road. SED has a regulation that doesn't permit us to extend the school year beyond June twenty-first, which is the end of our calendar right now. So we have limited options. So that provides us with that opportunity to recoup days in March. In looking at this scenario to modify spring recess, again, there's some complexities here, maybe some bigger obstacles for some than others, but we recognize we have a set of religious holidays, Passover in the front of the week, and Good Friday, Easter holidays finishing the week. Again, family and staff vacation days, and the idea that if we have more closings down the road, more snow days, that we could be faced with a challenge in not having the opportunity to make the 180 days. Be mindful that if we do not make 180 days, that we can be penalized by a loss of state aid. So there's a dollar amount associated with that as well. And then the other scenario that was a consideration, because outside of April first, mid-winter recess, spring recess, was looking at two other holidays that lie on our calendar, the first being Martin Luther King Day and Memorial Day. There are some complications because of contractual obligations with those being federal holidays, and also looking at not providing any consideration for the fact that we could be faced with other closures. Advantages, looking at the theme that we saw in the two before, that we're not looking at as many disruptions to vacations during recess periods. We also reached out a little bit, we looked around to our neighbors, tried to see what other folks were doing. It's a complicated piece because a lot of districts start off following a generic BOSI's calendar, where you try to align things, recommend, coordinate a lot of services throughout the county, we share a lot of services with BOSI's. So with that said, people start off at a common starting point, but then districts go their own direction. So we tried to inquire to see where folks were with respect to February recess, how many people have a February recess, a full week as opposed to a long weekend, and then seeing where spring breaks felt. It's kind of muddled. You see a handful of districts have a long weekend in February, a handful of districts have, or larger than a handful of districts, as you can see from the data before you, have a full week off. Majority of districts have the same week in March off as we do, but then there's some that have a combination of like a four or five-day weekend and then a break later in the year, and a variety of different scenarios that fit their needs. So with the assistance of BOSI's, we facilitated a survey, trying to collect this data to try to help inform some of our decision-making recently. And of the districts in the county, we had 24 respondents. You can see that there were, of the respondents, 11 districts include a week-long recess in February, 13 of them have a long weekend. Looking at February recess, those, because of the impacts of the storm, are looking to modify the February recess. Nine districts that responded are looking to modify the March recess. But what was interesting, when you saw the responses from some of those folks, or you went to the district and looked at their websites, they identified those as makeup days when they approved their calendar last spring. None of those districts like us were in a position where they could have forecasted what would have happened with the storm. So there's a layer of maybe some uncertainty there, and they could potentially be scrambling later in the year. So with that said, when we were last together as the Board and Administration in this forum, we had some conversation on that, and it was asked what my recommendation would be. And of course, we first looked April first, as I identified earlier, and then my recommendation was to identify not only the other instructional days that were needed, but to try to find a way to make sure we're providing continuity of instruction, trying to impact as few people as possible. And the result is, as you can see before you, what I recommended beyond April first was to seek to reclaim three days in February recess. Main Street School provides another angle to this, and the recommendation here with the last, per our calendar now, the last student day district-wide is identified as being the twentieth, with the twenty-first being a superintendent's conference day. So what we would do is Dallas Lane Middle School, High School would end on the Thursday, the twentieth, and Main Street School would reclaim its last day on the twenty-first with an early release day.
Yeah, just before I know this will be on the consent agenda, and we will ask for comments from the community, but I want to let everybody know, first of all, I want to thank everybody that gave input to us on this. I have to say that 99 percent of the comments we received were intelligent, constructive, and helped us flush the issue and understand all of the hardships that, you know, adding days back to scheduled vacation days bring to the community. About 1 percent wasn't all that productive, but we still tried to respond to them as well. I can tell you that an inordinate amount of time has been put in, not only among Chris and staff, but also individual board members weighing in with Chris about what other districts are doing, what we're hearing, what the community is telling us, what we feel. But, you know, we get, I have non-refundable flights, and I pay for hotel and everything for the February break, so we don't make the decision to add back in days to the February break lightly. We, I'll be making the same decision that many in the community will make, which is whether to send my kids to school on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, or whether to go on vacation. So we get it, there, you know, we're in a tough situation here, we didn't cause it, and there's no easy way around it. And I think that in looking at the possibility of having to claw back more days if we had bad weather this winter, the most prudent course of action was to keep the March break static and take away from the February break. So that's my thoughts, and I feel what I think the Board will hopefully agree to is reasonable. I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in or we can go to -- Thank you, Chris. I guess at this point, we'll go to the normal, back to the normal agenda and ask for comments from the community for any topics that appear on the agenda. Please, so you can go to the microphone, state your name.
Sorry, I forgot the protocol. Thanks for all the dialogue on this, because I know it's not easy for anybody this mid-winter where we take our days off. Whether we pay for flights or not pay for flights, or we go in February, we go in March, or what holiday we have is not my concern. We're a village and everybody shares in this. The only personal concern I wanted to voice is when you take kids out of school of your own, it's our problem, we've got to make up the work, take the homework, lug the 80-pound backpacks and all that. When you have high school kids missing crucial academic material that they will be penalized for when they come back if they don't lug 80-pound backpacks, I have an issue with begging the teachers to please, if it's really two days we're only missing in high school, even though it's three days that you're, you know, putting back on, is it possible for no new content or no new assignments, no tests, really? I don't want to come back to East School plus an headline and have my kid as a junior, where colleges looking at this court, you know, to say, "Mom, I told you I shouldn't have gone on vacation, ruining our vacation." So if there's a way for us to really not just pass this down to the kids, you know, second grade's different and fourth grade's different, 11th grade is real time for colleges.
Yeah, we understand the concern. I think Chris has some thoughts he'd like to share on that specifically.
And our communication that went out right before the Thanksgiving recess, I feel like we're just talking about days off of vacation all the time.
All the time.
But with that said, we did make a statement that we're going, we acknowledge the constraints here. We want the days to be meaningful days, but at the same time, we're going to make efforts to accommodate everyone, and we're going to do as reasonable as we possibly can be. We're not going to be in a spot where we're going to want kids to walk back into school and have to sit down for an assessment. We need to recognize that we already have protocols and student handbooks for when students are absent and providing a certain allotment of time to be able to make up missed assignments, and we will work to honor those arrangements. Dr. Core is going to work with the building principals and department chairs to try to dress this in the most reasonable fair manner we can, but at the same time, recognize we feel we have a responsibility that these are not lost days for the children that are in school. And, you know, we believe that the large majority of students are going to be in school with the exception of some that have vacation plans. But as an aside, I did neglect, I did have one additional slide that I neglected in looking into the future, that we acknowledged that there were some challenges and limitations, and that when we look at building our calendar in the coming months, there's going to be consideration, I get, I'm telling you now, and recommendations to be considerate of providing, building in potentially more time for snow days, developing a plan for give-back days if necessary, and identifying a methodology by which we're going to modify the calendar if we have an extreme number of closures such as we've experienced this year. So we're going to try to be more proactive in moving forward. So we can plan, we can give you as a community, as a board, as staff, everybody can plan better, acknowledging that if there's going to be the possibility of a vacation period modified, you know that it may be February, it may be March, so if you're going to prioritize a period of time to invest money for a vacation, you may choose one or the other. Hadn't been done, but we're telling that we definitely will be doing that next year.
And I'd just add that if there's a way that the teachers can work with the students so that the students are working when they come back to make up the work, so that students are working less, but that there's an opportunity for a kid to actually go on a vacation plan without feeling under the duff or knowing that they're coming back to, yeah, well, you were supposed to do some work even though you said you weren't, of course you were. The practicality is tough to go away and work that at East School.
We can, I'm sorry, let me share a little bit.
Chris, is there any discussion coming out of Albany that the State Educational Department will see it clear to extend its school year by a day or two and alleviate every school district that's harrying their own feeling?
There has been no communication that I've seen come from SED that would lead us to believe that, and as we stated at the last meeting, there have been bills crafted that are going to be introduced into either houses in January, but all forms of those bills that I have either personally reviewed or have read reviews of indicate that we would have to go through steps such as this before you would be granted any leniency in fulfilling the 180-day requirement. But specifically, Mrs. McCann, you presented a different angle, and if you give us that opportunity to go beyond June twenty-first, but that I have not heard any talk of that.
Any other comments from the community on anything on the agenda?
Good evening, David Hochheiser. Because I have full faith in the integrity of faculty and the decisions you make, I might be speaking unnecessarily, but I do, when I heard about your putting days back in February, the first chunk of time that came to my mind was the last week of school in June that at Dallas Lane is traditionally cut by half, if not a third. Last year, we were told that those days were so short because the district didn't expect families to all be there, and that it was kind of the end of the year, and you didn't really know what they could be done. And so I also think about the families who might think to cancel vacations or make amends to get their kids to school, and I not only, I just want to reiterate what was just said, that I think if we're going to have school, we should have school, but also prompt you way in advance to maybe think about that last week in Dallas Lane, because I know last year, I know a lot of people who went on vacation because there were such, so few hours, the other way around. So if we're going to --
Appreciate the remarks. As everyone knows, this is my first year living through the calendar, and just as we're reevaluating how we're managing vacation time and identifying potential closure time, know that that's certainly a consideration, whether students in school for seven-hour day or four-hour day or one-hour day, it needs to be something of value, and we have to consider what makes a one-hour day valuable. So recognize that we're going to, we're looking at the calendar through due lines. You're welcome.
Any other comments from the community on matters on the agenda? Does the Board, before we go move to the consent agenda, is there anything that the Board wants to pull off for specific discussion? I have one thing, but happy to yield to anyone down the line. We're approving donations to the district, and I think one of the nice things we're starting to do is acknowledge people publicly who are making donations. So I'd like to make thank yous to Jane Fankinell, Roger Burkhart, Glenn and Catherine Christensen, the Scally family, and of course, our PTSA who are constantly giving us a lot of good stuff. I do want to make one other announcement that benefits the district ultimately. You know, the IEF, who provides a lot of great, great contribution to the district in the way of providing money for, for a lot of classroom activities that we otherwise couldn't afford, is having their annual casino night in January, it's their big fundraiser. I know that there's flyers that if you please buy your tickets, I think you can get them before December 15 to get extra gambling chips. Mr. Whitney's put in a case of good wine up for auction, so it'll be a very exciting event if only for that. So can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. I guess at this point, we'll go to section 10.1 and invite the representatives from Land to provide their presentation on both where we are with Mizaros Field and also on the traffic calming study that we've asked Dr. Bruce Lewis.
We'd like to welcome Richard Wasbrock, who is the Director of Civil Engineering for Land Associates. I'm sorry, Rich has become a familiar face around here, and we're certainly glad that you're able to join us. Following our last presentations from Rich, we were looking certainly at a broad-scope project originally, right? We were looking at the needs that were present as a result of poor conditions at Mizaros Field, need for renovation to the track, and the conversation grew into the exploration of what we could possibly do to enhance East Field as a quality practice area, potentially a B-type field for games if need be for overflow. And one of the last requests we had on this front for Rich and his colleagues was to take a look at East Field, begin to draw some ideas for us and generate recommendations for East Field. And they moved forward and started digging holes, and we came across the construction debris that has really consumed a huge amount of their time, a lot of our attention, and they've been focusing their energies on managing that project for us, as well as some other small initiatives that we have going on. But at the same time, we don't want to stop focusing on the bigger picture, recognizing that we're in a position where, I believe the Board has stated, that we're not going to race forward with a project until we understand the scope and all the needs. East Field, the Board has stated, is top priority to make sure we're addressing health and safety concerns locally for our students, our neighbors, our staff members that utilize the space. But at the same time, we don't want to lose opportunity to be able to delve further into at least the Mizaros aspect while we're starting to learn and understand the scope of East Field. So with that said, the last report that we issued to Rich and his colleagues was to go back and take another look at Mizaros Field, and in doing so, go through with a fine-toothed comb, take a look at some other opportunities that may be there for us, spec out different products that we may want to consider. Questions and comments came from the public during one of Rich's presentations, asking about some synthetic products that utilize organics as the fill. So Rich has taken a look into that. So today, Rich is going to provide initially an overview of where we are with Mizaros Field, some more recommendations that he may have for us, and then from there, we'll move into a different project that he's been working on. So I'll be quiet now, Rich, and let you talk for a few.
I'm done, you, you can leave. Thank you. It was a great synopsis of what's transpired over the past two months, some changes because of East Field, but tonight's focus is Mizaros Field. The slides I'm going to show you, many are repeats from the past presentation for those who weren't here. If I go too quickly through them, I'll slow down and answer them in further detail. The purpose of our study of Mizaros Field was to look at what can we do to improve the drainage conditions out there. drainage conditions out there. Making staff, the operational staff are doing a wonderful job, but they're challenged by the physical limitations on the field. There's poor soil conditions underneath. And single click. All right. There we go. Jump ahead on me. The existing conditions is a natural turf field. There's relatively sufficient surface pitch, but through the use of natural turf field, you get potholes, you get wear spots that collect water. And with the underlying poor soil conditions, that just accelerates, and that leads to further mud holes and potholes and so forth. Several months ago, we did some test holes at Mizaros Field. We found the poor play soil. We did firmability tests. Our results were poor. So we talked about what can we do to improve the conditions of drainage. And the ultimate answer was to rebuild the field, to install a better drainage system, better irrigation, or replace the irrigation. I used to say the irrigation that's out there is sufficient, but in order to rebuild the field, we'd end up disturbing what's there, and to look into some artificial turf surfaces. Our last presentation, we spoke about artificial turf surfaces in general. Tonight, I have some more specifics on some of the vendors. And associated with that is because of all the work that's being done inside the track on the field, the need to rebuild the track because of damage that is going to occur throughout the construction project. First, a natural turf is an option. McCann and I said it before, I'm not in favor of this option. It will leave you with a surface that because of the amount of playing that your district puts on it, it doesn't allow the grass to recover. I've had a contractor who specializes in this type of service visit the site, look at it with me, and say, I'd be happy to sell you sod every year, year after year after year, because he doesn't think it'll hold. And this is what he wants to sell. So he sold himself out of a job in our discussion. But if you choose to pursue it, you can do that. I just want you to know that I'm concerned about longevity of that type of field. I'm concerned about the construction of it. The construction of a natural grass field where you lay seed down, or hydroseed it, or put sod down, you want to have two or three growing seasons where that field can create a root zone. That means a spring, a fall, and a spring. A year and a half of playability of use of that field that has to be eliminated. And that creates a scheduling issue for your teams. That's a challenge that you would have to face. So with that type of use, one of the key components would be to improve the drainage. The drainage that we had suggested was a sand slit drainage, which helps the water get down to the lower layers and disperses out from there. This slide is really just an overview of the field, so you get a better understanding of the amount of pipe works, all the horizontal lines going back and forth. Is there a pointer on this one?
I don't think so.
Okay. All horizontal lines going back and forth would be, you know, it'd be a series of pipes draining to the outside perimeter, then to the existing drainage system that currently exists out there. And that would improve the drainage substantially on the field, nor would it improve, the other that we were charged to look at was, what could we do to design some additional improvements to help the runoff offsite into the pond to the north of the property on River View Drive? River View Drive. This would help that. The water would still end up in the same direction. There might be some small change in how it flows there, but the change would be minimal.
Do you want us to ask questions while you're going through, or at the end?
Your choice.
Well, I just have a question. Why is it that this wouldn't help that, or is it that it wouldn't help?
Well, it wouldn't help it because we're essentially putting back what's there today. You've got a surface that runs off into surface drains, that surface drain's pitch to the pipe which has an open head wall and ditch, or open waterway leading to the pond. The water that we've encouraged to go downward, there's those underlying, underlying poor soils. So instead of using the vertical drainage down into good sandy soil, it would be trapped, but collected by the pipe system. Now, part of that drainage system, now I'll go back to the slide, if I can, there we go, is a series of pipes at the bottom of the photo behind you, or up on the slide, that those pipes also in turn lead to the existing catch basin system out to the pond. So it's all going in that same direction with no stormwater storage implemented. When we look at the artificial turf, by its very nature, in the makeup of the standard artificial turf system, there is a stone bed, and that provides some drainage improvement in and of itself. We look beyond that. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. In looking at the turf fields, we looked at what I consider the three major manufacturers in this area. We looked at FieldTurf, which is probably the most prevalent one, AstroTurf, and Mondo. We were also asked to look at Geoturf for a field that is a synthetic field, but they use an organic infill.
What does that mean?
What does that mean? A Geoturf field?
No, just an organic field.
Okay. Now, I'll go back to the base. What most people see, what most people know, is the FieldTurf field. It's a synthetic rug, synthetic rug that's infilled with rubber and sand. The rubber, some people question the health and safety aspects of it. So another manufacturer came up with a product that's organic-based. It's based upon coconut and cork.
And what?
Cork.
Cork.
A lot of wine bottles, for Phil.
Phil and I have stuff to donate to.
Those products, and let me preface this, a lot of our slides is based upon the manufacturer's marketing material, because it's just, the raw data out in the field isn't there. So you have to rely upon the studies that have been done, the publications that are out there. They're national studies, so there's credit behind them. The claim of the organic field is, one, it's a cooler surface because it's not a black I would be more concerned about that if we were in a southern climate, Danoflar, Arizona, higher sun exposure. In those areas, you also irrigate an artificial turf field to cool it off. I don't see that up in this area. I don't have it on any of the fields I've worked on. An organic system, at the end of life, you can take the organic material and recycle it as organic. You could mix it in topsoil, spread it across another field. That's their claim as a benefit over the synthetic products. But what I've seen with the synthetic infill products is they're now on their second or third generation. The fields that were put in 15 years ago are being recycled now. They're coming up with proceeds to recycle because they understand there's a real cost and cost savings if they learn how to recycle. So there's subcontractors, especially contractors, that have customized equipment to collect the material of the synthetic rug, the infill, process it on-site, avoid the trucking costs, and recycle majority of it on-site. Not all of it, but the majority of it. And then bring in some, I want "virgin" is the wrong word, but new material, it's recycled material to begin with, that's clean rubber surface layer. So the claim of the, as claim of the organic infill is becoming a little bit balanced with the recyclability and recent recycling of the infill, the synthetic infill products. So of the three vendors I looked at, one surprised me, Mondo, who I see all the time watching professional soccer, or in Europe it's football. It's people approved through soccer. I always think Mondo and soccer, FieldTurf and football. Mondo is no longer installing fields here in this area, and possibly in North America. They're downsizing their operation. That's a change in the industry that I've seen. FieldTurf and AstroTurf both provide synthetic infills. Geoturf and FieldTurf provide an organic infill.
Are you going to explain the difference between Geoturf and the other one?
Yes, I will try. Start with FieldTurf. I start with this one, this is the base that most people see and know. This has a sand and rubber infill mix. They claim their proprietary mixing and installation processes. They claim their, the fibers of their rug hold the rubber in place. If anybody watched a football game 15 years ago, and you see the receiver catching the football as you're running out of bounds, dragging their foot, you would see the spray of rubber. Today, when they do that, the spray's a lot less. Can't say it's completely gone, but they have done some improvement there. AstroTurf, on the other hand, uses a netting, if you will, in the middle layer on the slide that tries to hold their infill material into place. Two different ways they're trying to accomplish the same thing. They've heard the concern about the spray, the moving of the materials, they're both trying to accomplish that. When I look at the organic systems, both of the systems I look at have the backing mat, which, there's a difference in the organic systems, the cut of the rug is shorter. So I think to make up, and to make up for the playability and the Gmax and the technical requirements that these products need to meet, and they're all trying to meet the same standard, they've added a backing mat cushion, basically a rubber mat to help that playability. So although the rug is shorter and the amount of infill is shorter, you've got this added component. The infill in the Geoturf, as I said, is cork and coconut. And in the FieldTurf product, it's coconut, excuse me, cork alone.
Is that it?
Cork. The FieldTurf uses cork alone, the Geoturf uses cork and coconut.
Rich, are there two different FieldTurf products? Because one says organic and the other one says synthetic.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I was trying to find another organic vendor. This was personally found.
Got it. So FieldTurf also does an organic product?
Yes, they do.
They do both.
They do both. I looked at the Geoturf field down in New York, down in the city. Yes, the rug is shorter, it's lighter. I was able to grab the rug and casually pick it up with my hands. I didn't find that as a good thing, because if I could pick it up with my fingers, I would think somebody sliding and being tackled on it, or slide tackling in soccer, or whatever, it would have more opportunity to move. But I found that as a negative.
This is the Geoturf?
That was the Geoturf. And I think it's pretty okay because the rug itself is shorter and the infill is lighter, so you just don't have the weight holding it down.
So this, you're describing your experience with the Geoturf product?
Correct.
Cork and coconut infill?
Yes. Now, there's one field in the area. There are vendors out in New York, but there's, there is one. There are several in New York there. One is for a football soccer field, others, the other ones they're saying are more for a lighter recreation, whether it's a daycare use or lighter intensity, a park use, multi-use product.
Bronxville.
Bronxville?
Yeah.
Yeah. The private school that's there.
Riverdale?
So that's, to me, the difference between them. They're all, on the whole, very comparable, artificial turf versus natural turf. First, you have the way, the difference between those two. But once you get into the artificial turf, they're all trying to meet the same playability standards, the Gmax that you often hear. Costs are comparable, and I skipped by those slides, I know some of you have the handouts in front of you. Installation costs, they all say the base preparation cost, that initial stone base, since it's all about six inches, comparable cost. Installation cost from the Geoturf manufacturer is $5.25 a square foot. Better way to summarize it. If you look at the five different categories, natural turf, FieldTurf, synthetic, AstroTurf, synthetic, Geoturf, organic, and FieldTurf, organic, with the base preparation, the clear distinction between natural turf and artificial. When you get to the artificial, the costs are comparable in the $1.1 to $1.2 million. The square foot numbers aren't that different, and depending on the time of year that you bid it, and competitiveness in the field, you'll see a slight difference. But when they talk slight difference, they're, you know, taking 10 cents a square foot off the price, 15 cents a square foot, small changes.
The one thing I didn't get, maybe it's a typo, in Geoturf, under maintenance?
Twenty-four hours.
It doesn't have a dollar figure?
No, it doesn't. I couldn't get that from the manufacturer.
Okay.
Unless it really is, I'm pretty sure.
Twice monthly.
Yeah. They say twice monthly. That's com-
Well, that's 24 hours.
Yeah, that's a typo. I apologize. Their grooming is comparable to the rest of the artificial turf. Now, they give you a groomer to rake it. The groomer is basically a big comb, a big rake. And you drag along the field, trying to fill the low spots, scrape off the high spots.
So your guess is it'd be comparable to the five to 10 grand a year?
I would think so, yes. On this chart, I have Asterix next to the playtime on the AstroTurf. That's from their literature. I'm only presuming, I need spare production, that they're assuming you have lights on the field. Otherwise, it's going to be in the 50 to 60 hours a week, eight to 10 hours of daylight. You know, do you allow playing on Sunday, do you not? Natural turf, is that a lower number? I could argue, once again, that you have the same daylight hours of playability. Natural turf is not going to survive at that level of playability. But physically, you could play, it'd be a mud field. Installation time is the other thing I mentioned on the natural turf. Let's say it takes 60 days to install. It takes a year and a half, three growing seasons, to take root and gain strength. And that's an important distinction. The rest of them all work within a summer construction season. I've seen it done a lot quicker than 50, 40 days. I've seen it, I think we did it in three weeks on project. Not a public job. Private job, they're a little more allowed to do it on schedule. But it can be done. Maybe they also work at night.
Rich, a question when you're looking at the playtime and comparing the two organic products, do you know why there's a, the differential exists between FieldTurf and Geoturf? Because that's pretty substantial.
I don't have a precise answer. It's the marketing literature that they offer out there. To me, the difference, and I use their numbers because that's what's published out there, but to me, the number is how many hours of daylight you have, that's when you can use it. Or if you put sports lighting in, you can gain a couple more hours each night throughout the time.
But to your knowledge, there's no limitations necessarily to Geoturf over the FieldTurf organic product?
No, I don't believe so.
And you said, the Geoturf product is in Riverdale. What about the FieldTurf organic product? Is there anything that we can look at that's in the area?
I have to ask them. I haven't seen, I haven't seen their product.
So based on your pictures, the FieldTurf synthetic and organic, they're basically constructed the same way, it's just the infill is different.
That's basically their marketing literature, or not even, talking to their marketing director for North America, Dan Gels's name. He essentially said that. Yeah, it's the same rug, we just fill it differently.
Okay. And FieldTurf and AstroTurf synthetic materials, are both of those companies, have they been used here in Westchester that you've worked with?
I've worked with FieldTurf on several occasions. AstroTurf, I've worked, I've not done an installation of their field yet. I've worked with their- I've worked with FieldTurf on several occasions. AstroTurf, I've worked, I've not done an installation of their field yet. I've worked with their sales staff and their technical staff to work on specifying them, but they were not successful on any projects I had worked on. Do they have installations in this area? Yes. Their website lists probably fifteen to twenty installations in New York with different products. Some are at a lower level recreational product. Others are at their high school level, which you would want, product. Some are at college, which is essentially the same product they're offering at the high school level. I'm trying to think of the closest site from here.
But you've never installed, you've never worked on a project with the organic fill for the FieldTurf?
I don't.
Well, I guess just as a corollary to what you asked, when you've dealt with school districts who have done this, and a lot of these fields have come online, especially in Westchester over the past three or four years, which product do schools typically go with?
Typically, as their base specification, they use the FieldTurf. Public bidding, you have to have a performance spec. So you do have the nature of substitutions and vendors have to prove that they are in or equal if they want to be pre-qualified. You have a shop supplemental process where you could have changes during the course of construction. In a project like yours, because of the amount of site preparation, you also have a competitive bidding for the site preparation. Now, that's at least half of your project here than some others that are just replacing the rug. We've done some projects where you take an old AstroTurf field, which, I don't know if you all remember the old AstroTurf field. It's the one that people are known for bad knees and bad ankles for, a lot of injuries. That's not what they're selling today. So they're trying to rebrand themselves. But taking that field, removing it, and putting in a new artificial turf, it's just the rug, top layer. Yes?
I like this. I think this is great information. And I'm very happy to see this side by side by side. Because in the past, we really didn't have any kind of clear vision as to what things cost relative to each other. So that's great information, and thank you. What I see here is we have a preponderance of information on all the different brands of synthetic turf. And we have a, you know, one little column on natural turf. And I see that there's no longevity for natural turf, probably because it lives in perpetuity, except for the center run of the aisle.
Or it lives for the first week that it gets shredded because it's playing on the middle of the rain.
Yeah, that lets somebody off, right? So what I see is, we have one field where we have this problem that we're dealing with called Eastfield. And then we have Mazaro's field. And for the price of FieldTurf, AstroTurf, Geoturf, and FieldTurf, we could buy two natural turf fields. And oh, by the way, we have two fields. So this, the right side of your ledger talks about spending a million dollars or so. Putting in synthetic turf doesn't deal with Eastfield at all. The right side of your comparisons also say we're going to have to spend roughly a million dollars every eight years reinstalling as per the manufacturer's longevity. So I'm concerned that although this goes partial to the discussion of what costs are, it doesn't go anywhere near the level of information that the community is going to need to understand, do we want natural turf, two fields? Or synthetic turf, one field with a still that I saw behind the senior parking lot? So I would love, maybe on a going forward basis, we have a cycle that shows, okay, natural turf costs this for real, okay? And just lump all the synthetic turfs together and call it a million dollars, even though it's more than that. And say, okay, this is what it looks like. And at the end of eight years, we've got to do, come up with another million dollars. The base is still good for natural turf. The base is still good for the synthetic turf, I would assume, give or take. So is that what our community wants to buy into? And I understand that multiple growing seasons, I question it because I see my kids running crazy on my yard after I've reseeded it. Maybe you have to reseed every season. I think Irvington does that for their different playing fields. And the different country clubs do that for their fields, their golf courses. So I think we're dismissing natural turf because there might be this kind of inkling that Irvington wants a synthetic field. And I just hope that we present a little stronger case for natural turf to give the people who are going to pay for it a true understanding of what the costs are going to be, which are sizably different. So big, long rhetorical statement, yes. And I'm finished with it.
Okay. Couple thoughts from what you said there. The replacement cost on an artificial field is forty to fifty percent of the installation cost. Because as you said, the base is still good. You're only replacing the rug. And as they improve their recycling of the infill product, I think that number will come down as you get into the second, third generation. There will be improvement there.
That'll be super helpful to understand what really this is what we're talking about monetarily.
You're looking for, call it a thirty-year life cycle type analysis, where you can say, how many times do I need to replace this artificial field, whichever version, versus a natural turf? And I still pause when you have the natural turf longevity as forever. Because my concern is not natural grass being used in my backyard, yours, or the golf club and golf spikes. It's the soccer and football cleats shredding through it after the rainy day. That longevity is a big question mark. And to repeat what I said about the one vendor that I had come look at it, he said he would be selling a hundred thousand dollars every year.
Well, that's if we chose to buy the sod. It was a sod seller, I'm sure.
Right. If we factor that type of cost in over thirty-year life, the numbers might be closer.
But I don't think, I don't think anyone on the right line would buy sod every year. I know Irvington doesn't, and the golf courses don't. They have people that put down grass. So I'm just saying, I want a stronger argument than, I talked to this guy who sold sod. I think that's a little shallow, honestly.
No, he doesn't sell just sod. I'm saying sod, sod seed, grass, he's a natural grass installer, whichever.
I accept what you're saying. You understand the point I'm making.
Yes, I do. You're looking for a long-term cost cycle, that's the main point. And at the end of that cycle, where the cost analysis works out for you as a district, is it better to spend money on several natural turfs or a singular artificial?
Pretty simple.
Any other questions from the board? I know there might be a question from the community, but you have-
Just a comment, just to add to the dialogue with respect to the natural turf fields. Rich, as we know, reached out to a particular natural turf vendor that he referenced. There was also a question or request from public to reengage Chip Osborne of Osborne Organics, who had consulted with the district in some of the prior initiatives to address the fields. It took a long time to hear back from Chip. He's heavily involved in consulting and teaching and workshop in all over the country and even internationally now. Quite honestly, he told me that he was, and I don't want to represent him, but to essentially paraphrase his commentary, was that unless we were committed to going forward with a grass field, he no longer wants to dedicate his time to contributing to grass versus turf discussions anymore. He wants to work with folks that focused on maintaining grass or building grass only. He said he could certainly come down and talk with us, but he said it would be a few months out before he would have the opportunity to even schedule us.
Okay.
I'm just responding to the fact that there was a request that named his business in particular.
Oh, okay. I'd love to know everything.
Well, this is the grass consultant. A lot of people, they wanted to just have a grass field. Said that you've got to talk to this guy, he's the guy that do it.
Well, in view of the fact that we're not exactly in a rush mode on this particular project, would it make sense to try to engage with another grass consultant if Chip is not available? Especially given Jim's point of view that maybe the costs-
We'll look to identify that and engage some of his.
Basically, the question, how do we actually build a natural turf field that's more sustainable?
And I guess the one other question that I had, Rich, was with respect to the organic fills, something that jumped out to me, and probably just because of us dealing with kids in their welfare all day long, was the organic fill, didn't have concern about cork, but I had a concern about coconut. And whether or not coconut could present a challenge with children with allergies. Because I've had students that have run the full gamut of nut allergies, and coconut is often on that list, or has appeared on that list.
Right. I can't speak to the health and safety of it. I'm blessed with not having allergies. And aside from saying I don't like the taste of coconut.
So I would say that-
We hold on against you.
When we circle back, Rich, in the near future, to talk about the next steps, to some more data collection, some more illustrations and that, that's one thing we might want to collaborate and investigate.
I would also add that, you know, in the same way that Jim was speaking about the importance of giving natural turf a clear cost comparison, as you said, I felt that your answers around Geoturf and FieldTurf were not particularly robust. You know, that you don't have a lot of information about those two solutions. You know, you've referenced kind of speaking to their marketing folks a number of times. I mean, for us, speaking personally, it seems like if natural turf, if the community decides that natural turf is not a serious possibility because of a limitation in playing time, and that is something we've talked about as board meeting on a number of occasions now, it still seems like we have to give it a reasonable due diligence. Again, along the lines of what Jim said. But I think that we have a serious obligation to look into the organic solutions. And that what you described here tonight, for me anyway, wasn't really sufficient because it sounds like it's easiest for you to pursue the things that everybody else has put in, which is the FieldTurf synthetic or the AstroTurf synthetic. It's the surface that you're most familiar with in terms of what you've done. And I respect that, you know, that's your business, you know, to do that. But I think we owe it to ourselves to understand the organic solutions and what the pros and cons of those might be. You described the Geoturf as being flimsy, I think. I'm not sure if that was your word.
Well, it's my word, but I can pick it up where any synthetic infill I can't pick up.
Right. So the question is, is the FieldTurf equally flimsy?
No, I can't pick that up.
Oh, I didn't realize that you'd actually touched the FieldTurf organic.
Oh, the FieldTurf organic, I've never seen installed.
Right.
And to your point, I don't think I'm trying to take the easy route. If anything, I would say, from an engineering perspective, it's safer when you're spending somebody's money to take a proven method rather than being the frontrunner on a new product.
Let me try to say it more clearly. So if somebody stops me on the street and said, why did you choose a FieldTurf synthetic as opposed to the FieldTurf organic? I don't want my answer to be because our engineering consultant knew nothing about the FieldTurf organic product. That seems like an insufficient answer. A more sufficient answer is, these are the pros and cons of this product. Here's where it's been installed. And I've actually talked to the people who are using that field. And here are the pros and cons of that field. And you haven't gone to that step yet. But I'm just speaking passionately about it because I don't feel particularly good about choosing a synthetic turf, a synthetic turf made of rubber and car tires, you know. I would rather have a much more complete understanding of the organic turf products.
Is there a way, in the next iteration of this, is there a way, I mean, probably just about every school district in Westchester has a synthetic turf, organic, whatever, field. Is there a way that we can get a listing of what different school districts have as their chosen product? That we might have some people have a conversation with those districts to know the pros and cons of real-life use?
Each of the vendors have on their website a list. It's probably not complete. It's probably their highlighted projects, but that's a great starting point. There are fields in Westchester, Northern Jersey, Long Island for each of the vendors. Certainly, you know, if you want to reach out to any of the other ones, or you want me to reach out to any of the other ones, we can do that. You know, I think we're going to find that the organics, there's just less to look at. But we'll gather what information we can from those that have it. And the synthetics, as you said, I think every town, every district, not every district necessarily, but every town or every other town has a synthetic field now.
So it's keeping up with, excuse me, it's keeping up with the Joneses. I understand that, okay? It started twenty years ago, and it's now come all the way to Irvington. The one thing I will say on the natural turf, if we have two natural turf fields, we do have enough playing time than we would if we got once and then, because we can use both at the same time. Not that I'm a fanatic about natural turf. I really believe I want to give all the information to the community who is going to decide what they want to pay for.
If you have two natural turf fields, just keep in mind, one is Eastfield. There's a lot of other costs that are going to waste if they're just paying out the natural turf.
Well, okay, that's what we need to know.
Right. That would count for that up here.
I understand that.
I was just going to say that there's, you know, I think we walked about three quarters of the way through your presentation with respect to fields. That there's, when we talked, we got, I've been talking about durability and playability and costing of the different surfaces here, looking at the five different options. But when we were talking about natural turf, you spoke about the drainage system. But I think you could move forward. You have some information with respect to drainage associated with the artificial surfaces as well?
Do you have time for me, certain? Moving forward, we looked at adding additional stone under the field. The question posed to us last time I was here was, can we do better for the community in predominantly the drainage area, leaves to the pond on River View, by doing something extra on this field? Now, by the very nature of the synthetic products, there's a stone base under them. It's a clean stone, so there's air in the stone, it's voids in the stone that can be used to drain surface runoff, hold surface runoff, and release it slowly. We can do that. In addition to the base six inches, we said, let's take it further. What if we take another six inches and then another six inches? So six, twelve, or eighteen, base plus six, plus twelve, stone. We did some drainage analysis. We looked back at the study we did in two thousand and seven. On this, the pond is towards the top left of the screen. Areas four, five, and six contribute runoff to that pond. The field is in area six. In our analysis, preliminary design of the analysis, what we see is, from the study, we look in engineering at design storms. And in this area, the main three design storms are the one-year, the ten-year, and the hundred-year design storms. And the runoff from those storms leading to the pond. So areas four, five, and six combined, the net effect, existing conditions, one-year storm, five point three cubic feet per second, twenty-one point seven cubic feet per second, and ten-year, and forty-four point six in the hundred-year. What we did was then take our design, base design of six inches, and say, what kind of reduction to the pond? That was our analysis point, would that achieve? And that brought it down to four point nine, nineteen-three, and forty-four four, which represents a decent reduction, eight percent, you know, eight to eleven percent, seven to eleven percent in those storms. Then we said, okay, we were asked to do a little better. So we said, okay, what if we take another six inches? What can we reduce it to? And our improvements went to a twenty-one percent reduction, you know, twenty-one to twenty-three percent reduction. Then we said, let's take it one step further. And what we found is, by taking that extra step, our reductions, the return on the investment diminished. We went twenty-one to twenty-three, small change. Another way to say that is, when it rains in those heavy storms, you're only collecting the water that's raining on the field. And you don't want to take water from, off the field and put it under the field. And if you have those three areas, four, five, and six contributed to the pond, even if you did a fifty percent reduction in area six on the field, it may only correlate to twenty-two percent to the pond. So there's a net reduction in that effect. The good news is, clearly, if you add six inches or twelve inches, you have substantial improvements to the runoff to that pond. Those are substantial, twenty-two, even ten percent. Those are substantial, twenty two, even ten percent reductions.
That would be in addition to the costs that you shared with us and the others?
Yes, there's always a cost. The cost in round numbers is a hundred thousand dollars every six inch. By the time you excavate it out, truck that material off site, bring in new clean stone, lay it down, there probably is some efficiency in the sixth as well in the way the operation of the dozer can work. But round numbers, six inches of stone over that field is going to be a runoff down to valley.
The entire football field?
Inside the track.
And behind the gravel too?
And behind the gravel. It's a lot of material.
There might have been a question or two from the community?
Thank you. Thanks. Actually.
No.
Want anybody to sit down? I wanted to ask about the drainage of the fields before the track. Do you want me to hear the whole thing first?
Why don't we finish the presentation?
Your choice.
Okay.
No, it's all right. We're also, whoops, skipping over a few parts. We're also looking at the track. Now here, in my opinion, my experience, the road tracks are very similar one to the next. So we didn't look at multiple vendors. But within each vendor, there are two, three or four models that you can choose. There's, in this case, I looked at the Bynum. There's a Bynum or what they call BSS one hundred, a two hundred, a three hundred, a one thousand and one that's not even on here is a two thousand. The one hundred is impervious material, it's your lowest level. The two hundred and the three hundred are impervious. It's what I see and what I specify, that or the competitors' high school level. The one thousand, I specified at once on a high school that insisted they have a college level track. They also wanted an eight lane track rather than a six lane track, strike for NCAA. Their track program was obviously paramount. The two thousand I've never seen installed. It's, you know, it's even higher end. The differences between them come to life, you know, playability. There's more cushion in the three hundred and the one thousand to the person running underfoot. How, if I can describe it well, in the three hundred photo, you can see a distinct red layer and a black layer. The black is put down first, the red is then spread on top of it. Two different processes to put it down. The one hundred and two hundred, they basically paved that same black mat using a paving machine like you can see on a road and then sprayed, you know, almost painting on top of it. A little simplified, but that's basically is a spray coat. The three hundred and the one thousand is they use an epoxy and rubber mixture and spread it out, more like a mason would spread concrete. So you get a different type of construction, you get a different life cycle, different costs. Looking at base preparation costs at the top, then different surface models of BSS one, two, three and one thousand, some restriping, you end up with a cost for the typical high school level of around two hundred ninety or three hundred thousand dollars for construction. What each of the manufacturers that we've worked with, they all recommend recoding the surface within a five to seven year period. And they all indicate it's also based upon use, you know, weather conditions. You have to watch for when the rubber starts to thlemy from the asphalt underneath. And the key point to remember, looking long-term life cycle, is if you miss that window, you force yourself to reconstruct it rather than resurface it and that doubles your cost. You really want to pay attention to that window and try to budget accordingly for it. It's an important window.
I'm sorry, did you just go back one, so it's roughly three hundred thousand?
Roughly three hundred thousand for the construction costs. I put in soft, soft plus.
So it's four hundred thousand all in?
Four hundred thousand all in, yes.
At BSS three hundred?
At three hundred, which is a typical level, whether it's a Bynum or the competitors' product. This side I didn't change. It's still our recommendation to go with the artificial turf over the natural turf. I understand your concerns on the natural turf, but my biggest concern there is that the surface will not survive the use that I saw in the few days I was out there. I don't know the programming of your sports, it's a question you have to answer internally. But the days I was out at your site, doing my test holes, doing work at other projects on the site, fields are used heavily. My snapshot is that they're used too heavily.
Rich, did you have, in terms of the artificial turf, did you have a preference between the synthetic versus organic?
I don't have a preference, but I think your statement before was fair. I don't know enough about the organic infill. I know of one field in this area and I went and took a look at it. Probably brutally talked to the maintenance staff, you know, how does it hold up? My first reaction is I didn't like what I felt and saw. I would be encouraged to see others. And then I weigh the use of the organic substance and the health and safety issues and I'm not a health and safety expert versus a rubber and the recycling of the fields that I do see in place. I think the concern of them taking the rubber and taking it to a landfill, that has been addressed.
Just one other question, I mean, the organic products from field turf and geoturf, they must be relatively new, I would imagine. And so is it a case of just, you know, installations having caught up with the fact that it's a relatively new product and so that if we were to go with that, even though there aren't a lot of case studies to look at, which is a little nervous making, we would be on the leading edge of something that you think is going to become more of a trend where fields will be going in the future rather than relying on the other surface, on the other infill? Hard to say.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
I just was trying to.
There's a lot of rubber tires out there.
The factual question is, how new are these organic products?
They're new. There's another organic product that I didn't mention, I will now. And that is a synthetic rug that has the same, similar organic infill and has grass growing out of it. Geoturf makes that. In my discussions with. It's at Penn State or Steeler Stadium, where does Steeler play?
Well, I think, well, I think it was just, I'm a Pittsburgh guy. I think the product was actually developed at Penn State. They have a turf studied there.
I think a different vendor may have done that?
Possibly, I don't, maybe not Geo, but I know that Steeler Stadium has it.
Geoturf's largest push for that market is Australian rugby. There's a lot of fields in Australia that won't let me go there to look at. More importantly to this school is the cost doubles. And he said, I don't even want to tell you about that product because it's just too expensive for us.
I heard it's ridiculously expensive.
Yeah. And the professional level fields that it has been installed on, the synopsis is, if you can't grow grass there, don't use this because one field, the grass grows so well, it's choking out and on another field, it's a barren dirt field. You know, so they're having that mixed result of issues of a natural grass field in their maintenance of it. Interesting product, but I don't know if it's going to take hold.
Thank you very much. I guess before we go on to the speed study, I know there's questions from the audience.
Yep. Thanks. I guess I want to know if you guys have done any research about which of these alternatives is safest, you know, most forgiving, least feet injuries, least foot injuries, least orthopedic injuries? I mean, is there research available on, not just like inhaling the rubber, but actually which is the most forgiving surface for our kids? And if there is, I would, you know, I'd encourage you guys to look into that, see if there is research about that.
When we first started the process, just to educate ourselves a bit, and I think others have done some different things, but no, I spent some time researching the different studies because a lot of them have actually come online in the last few years, not only looking at the benefits and the burdens of artificial turf, but also looking at, since artificial turf has been online now for.
Quite some time.
Good amount of time, looking at rates of injury on artificial versus natural. So there's a lot of that stuff out there. I'm happy to send you what I have.
I just didn't know if it got specific to all these different types of grasses or, you know.
No, this is really the first time where.
Okay.
I did the different thing. I can tell you that, at least from what I've been seeing, that there really is no measurable difference in injuries on artificial versus natural. What you find is there are some different injuries. For instance, and I'm sure that Rich gets to talk to this as well from his experience, but you get more sort of like retinite turf type burns on the artificial surface as opposed to grass. Whereas with grass, there's actually a lot of information out there about more knee and ankle injuries.
Right, okay.
On grass, so it's sort of, but there is a lot of information out there.
Okay, thank you. And I have two other comments. I would encourage, I totally agree with Phil and Jim in that if there's any way to just do a survey from schools, rather than just seeing marketing information online, I mean, I'm a marketer, if you want to market to this community, if you can actually get real life anecdotal feedback from schools about what they're using, why they're using fine schools, if they're not in this area that are using the organic fill, find out what they like about it, what they don't like about it. I mean, that's the way you're going to sell this, is by having real life data. And then finally, I live on Riverview Road, happily I'm above the pond, but I've lived there for sixteen years and you might know Phil, in the last year or so, there was, you know, there's a water spat that comes out of that pond that was blocked and the houses down the hill had water damage that came up inside their house. And so I'm just wondering if it's been looked into, and I'm sure it has, it's part of the whole engineering deal, but if there is extra water flow because there's better drainage, can that pond handle it? And, you know, is all the engineering underneath it and all the water flows and all the exit pipes in good shape? So I just want to.
We've spoken about that internally, obviously, you know, we haven't gotten to.
I just want to raise that.
No, 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 of course.
I've lived on that street for many years and I've seen the water issues that happen from that pond.
It's an issue that this board is definitely aware of. I know that land is aware of. I don't think we've gotten to the level.
Right, I'm sure it might be later.
To actually map out, you know, how we're going to deal with that, but please.
It might be a prerequisite for me to say that.
What we were also suggesting in our preliminary design was, with the additional drainage under the field and with the drainage that's part of the base system of the field, you can actually get a reduction of flow, not an increase of flow, but a reduction of flow offsite towards the pond. Because you're collecting and controlling the flow discharge.
Any other questions?
Hi, Esther Samra. Rich, could I ask you just to explain, because I'm not sure I followed this, can you explain the recycling protocols for the rubber crumb after it's reached the end of its life? I wasn't sure I followed how this new generation of turf is being recycled differently from the prior generation.
What I saw previously was the material would literally be scooped up by the dozer and put in a dumpster and taken offsite. In the last field, they had specialized equipment on site that they separated the rug from the infill, screened and modified the infill and reused probably seventy five percent of it on site as part of the new infill layer. It was used as part of the, it goes down and lifts or it goes down and layers the infill. So they can reuse some of the old material for the bottom layers, the top layer being a clean rubber, you know, can't use the old because it's a sand rubber mix, brought that in.
Okay. Because a problem that school districts have when they have to recycle this is that they can't recycle it and no one wants to take it away because it's toxic. So they can't take it to a landfill. So it presents a lot of issues for school districts. So what you're saying is that you would potentially not have that issue or have less of that issue because you're going to retain the rubber, some of the rubber, some proportion of the rubber crumb you're going to retain?
I think it's fair to say the industry has heard that message that they need to do something with their own product and they have realized the need to recycle and realized the need that you can't just truck it to a landfill.
Right.
And the costs associated with it. Trucking is a large cost.
Right, but it's also because it's toxic, so landfills won't accept it. So anyway, the other thing I just wanted to say is that geoturf, I'm not sure, I think that's an American brand name. It actually has a different name. It originates from Italy and it's used predominantly, from my understanding, in soccer fields in Italy. So I think that in this country, it hasn't been widely used at all. So if we're going to look to see what the history of it is, what the use is like, the longevity, the durability, I think we have to look to Europe to see how successful that has been. And then just wanted to say something about the chrome rubber fill. You know, the problem is that it's recycled tires and a lot of recycled tires have immense amount of carcinogenic materials. And when we talk about the ambient temperatures and how that can affect the chrome rubber, it's not only that, like, we're not in Texas, we're not in Florida, so we don't have this issue where we're playing on the field at eighty degree ambient temperature and that the chrome rubber is going to heat up to a hundred and fifty degrees, making it unplayable. That definitely is an issue, but it's not, it doesn't affect us so much up here. But what does happen is that even if the ambient temperature is sixty degrees, the chrome rubber heats up to a degree that it starts to give off VOCs. And so that's the issue for when the temperature rises, the chrome rubber heats up and even if it is still possible to touch it, right, it's not hot, it's not too hot to the touch. However, at that point, it's releasing more chemicals. And so that's, that's the issue when the temperature rises, so.
Yeah, I could just ask on something like that, I agree with you. I've also read studies that counteract that. My only point is, please send that to us so we can review it. We want to have as much information as possible.
And I just want to address the idea of, the whole notion of the field of studies. Unfortunately, it's so difficult to really get a grasp on these studies because so many of them are subsidized by the artificial turf industry. So there are very, very few independent scientific studies that have been done. That's the problem.
Yeah, I would agree with you and I would agree that what I've found was that they were subsidized on both sides, both from the people who are anti-turf and the people that are pro-turf. So you have to weigh, you have to weigh both sides, but that's, I think that stands to reason.
Again, I might be speaking pointlessly because I do have faith that this is going to be sort of a no-brainer for you guys, but I'm assuming somewhere in this discussion it's going to be the amount of hours we actually need the fields for. I mean, I saw a wide variety, I have no idea.
It's all in the evaluation. Have we gone through that?
And the other thing I'm assuming is that this is all part of next year's budget discussions, not going to be spent in advance of? But after spending, after spending a lot of nights last year in meetings here talking about laying off teachers and other things of that sort, the idea of putting a million plus dollars into a turf field outside of a budget discussion, it just, it seems a little awkward.
I'll respond, two different questions there. One, that we did do an analysis of our usage of the fields, which included not only school, middle school, high school, competitive athletics and PE programs, but also community use of the fields. If you want to shoot me an email tomorrow, I'll send you that data. We shared that in an earlier presentation. And with respect to the funding of a project like this, we look at these, this is a different entity. This is a different discussion to have. I do not foresee, nor does the board, having this conversation and. I do not foresee, nor does the board, having this conversation in conjunction with the budget. This would be a bonded initiative that we would go to the public for. Where are the information collecting stages? Trying to decipher the direction we want to go, what the board's interest is in moving forward with this. Once we have more information on East Field, I would envision that we're going to have full-fledged dialogue, public forums, bringing in experts to have a conversation about these topics. And that project, I would assume, would be handled separately from the, from the district budget.
And I guess at this point, I'd like to move forward with the traffic calming study, just, just to keep us on a bit of schedule.
Sure. Traffic calming, we looked at high school, middle school. There was concern about vehicles passing through or coming from the site, predominantly from the neighbors above the site and student parking lots, and that's where our focus was. There were two types of traffic common devices we looked at. One is a speed hump or speed table that you're familiar with.
I have one.
Right out front here. And the other is rumble strips. Rumble strips you typically see by a, leading up to a toll booth is, is a common place you'd see them. There are standards for how to install them, and when to install them. There's combination, M U T C D, uniform traffic control devices, the F H W A, which is Federal Highway Administration, New York State Department of Transportation, and I T E, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. The other, the first three documents and bodies of, of roadway design point towards the I T E as the source for how and when to install. The difference between a speed hump and a speed bump, I don't have a speed photo of a speed bump, speed bump is a short little two-foot wide bump that everybody goes over. And you find, most people go faster over, because they go quicker, they don't feel. The speed hump is a long, protracted, typically twelve feet long, raised and lowering, that forces people to slow down and, and respect the speed of the area. As I said, you do have a speed hump or speed table out front here. The speed table out front has a level plateau or plane, because you're using it as a crosswalk. You can do that again in any future comming, or you can provide more of a rounded surface, because it's not the walking plane. Sorry, back. Of particular note in the guidance documents is, you don't want to install speed humps on a curve. They want a three-hundred-foot radius dimension on the curve, or better, or larger. You don't want to do it on a, on a steep slope, because by installing traffic calming measures, you are inherently creating a risk as much as you are eliminating risk. You're doing this to eliminate the risk of cars driving too fast. But if you put them in in the wrong way, you can create a hazard that the car could lose control. And two of those criteria is pitch of the road and curvature of the road.
For the record, we don't want to do that.
No, you don't. But with any traffic control device, there is a compromise, a given date, even guide rail. Everybody, and I hate to digress, but everybody says, throw up guide rail, protect us from that utility pole. The guide rail itself is a hazard. You know, you got a little utility pole, or you got a long guide rail. Which one are you getting in person? The guide rail, well, you might do less damage, maybe. That's true with most speed traffic control devices. This study, we also looked at rumble strips. Rumble strips, you want them to be far enough away from the stop sign, so that people can travel through the rumble strip, see the stop sign, slow down, and approach the rumble strip. So it acts as a warning. Hey, something's coming, pay more attention, slow down, you're going too fast. And on the screen, there's a little diagram of, of the standard layout of rumble strip space, second rumble strip space to your, your stopping point. With those criteria, we looked at your existing driveway system. And the shaded areas on the screen are areas that are not too small a radius, or too steep of a pitch to, to install the, the speed humps. So it leaves us two potential areas for the speed humps to be located. You know, that, they can shift slightly one way or the other, if you had a known walking path. Another one further up on the screen, just below that, there seems to be a walking path from the parking area to, next to the building, because there's a gate going into the field there. The one on the bottom of the screen, I didn't see an obvious walking path of people, of students, or parents, or teachers walking to and from the field. They seem to walk more around the curve and through the main gate. So that one can shift as well. The other criteria with a, a speed bump or a speed hump is it doesn't go curb to curb, because you have to allow a path for water to flow around it, down to the cash basin. In the places that we show on the screen right now, those are fairly well height ones, so that's even less of a concern. But if you shift them, you do have that gap, so you have some latitude there. The rumble strips are on the right side of the screen. They're further up the hill in advance of a car coming down from the neighboring development, approaching the stop sign. Those I'm a little concerned about in terms of location, because I need to review in further detail with the district, the survey, of whether they are completely or partially on the school's property, or partially on the neighbor's property in the subdivision. That driveway is split with the property line. So you'd have to work in conjunction with your neighbor to achieve the same goal, safety for the students, slow down the cars, to give them an answer to notice of the stop sign. To me, it's for everybody's benefit to put them in there. It's a viable location, but I'm not sure you have full control of that portion of the roadway there. No. But they would need to be up that, that far up the hill, just to be far enough with the stop sign to be a suitable location.
Can you see a scenario where you would recommend only doing the two speed humps in the general location that you have them, because of the logistics, but not doing the rumble strips up near the entrance to the development?
Certainly. You know, doing something is better than doing nothing. I think it's, you know, you express a clear need to do something. If you don't have control of property, you may not have the ability to put them in. So working within the boundaries that you have, and the roadways that you control, to, to work there, certainly, it's not all or nothing. Certainly-
My, my, my own guess, based upon what I've seen, is that the issue is not, there's only a couple houses that are back that way anyways. It's not the residents coming in and out of their houses from that development that are the issue. It's people driving up to campus, dropping their kids on and off, students, after school activities, things like that. So I question the need to put rumble strips up against the property line.
Agreed.
To the development, because I don't think that's the issue. The issue is slowing down the, the traffic directly on campus, not worried about slowing down the traffic coming onto campus from Deerman Park. Does that make sense? I mean, except that we-
Other things that I've seen, not necessarily part of our study, but I've seen in other districts, is they'll work with the local police department, have Matthews beginning of the year, educating the new parents, educating the new students, warning them, you know, going to some stronger measures and D B.
And, and the public should know that we have opened, there's been a continued dialogue, frankly, with the village about policing the road. There's complications, because it's not a public thoroughfare. The district owns the road. But we've increased, stepped up the dialogue to see if we can come to some sort of arrangement with the village to have them, you know, to increase the police presence on the road.
Last part of the calming, traffic calming would be costs. If we redo all of it, your price is roughly a fifteen thousand dollar effort for two speed humps. And your, the amount of work on the rumble strip is minor, so you're paying for the strike and prove of the damage, essentially, in science. It's not, not a large effort for, for the, compared to the other projects.
Sure.
Well, Rich, thank you very much. As we sit here and consider this information, I think that the one thing that is very important for us to, to bring up, that we certainly recognize the value to a project like this. Obviously, student safety is one of our ultimate objectives here. However, we want to make sure we're investing money responsibly, and we have to consider this project within the scope of the field renovations, right? So with that said, whether we jump in and the community endorses a field renovation project, or we look at just what we know we're going to have to eventually achieve at East Field, there's going to be significant construction vehicle traffic up and down campus road. And not only would we be concerned about speed humps surviving that traffic, we're, we already have concern about our newly paved roads surviving that volume and weight of those vehicles on a consistent basis. So I, I think the, my recommendation to the board is that this is certainly something that, that I would endorse for all the obvious reasons. But we need to, I think, consider that within the scope of the field project, and align this work in conjunction with that, so this would be completed afterwards, so we're not having to redo the work down the road.
That's, that's, that's a very good thought, and I'd want to consider that.
Very good. So with that said, Rich, thank you very much. I have a page and a half of notes that we're going to be circling back to review to plan some next steps.
Thanks.
All right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Bye-bye.
As our next agenda item, presentation I've obviously, I'd like to turn it over, turn the mic over to Phil Whitney, who will give us a kickoff discussion about district board and superintendent goals and objectives for the coming, for the current.
No preamble?
I have no preamble. That's it. The floor, the floor is yours, my man.
It's all mine.
It's all yours.
It's my office.
There you go.
All right.
Well, first of all, I want to acknowledge and thank Robin Kerner, who is my partner in this, so I'm going to be talking, but Robin was absolutely instrumental in getting this done. Secondly, I'd like to thank people who've already made comments on the goals and the documents that we published. It's always great to hear people's feedback. And there were a number of comments that were sort of editing in nature. These are drafts, so we appreciate the small comments that are edited in nature, as well as the bigger comments that are more substantive. So this is a draft discussion. The idea is, we're talking about this tonight, and we would like to adopt these as a matter of public record on December twentieth. The goal-setting process is something that is very important for any enterprise that has a board, and any company that has employees. I think we're working in a company that has not had some sort of goal-setting process. And so here, with the school board and our superintendent, our employees, we obviously take this very serious, seriously. It's one of the most important functions that a board can provide in setting goals for the district and for the superintendent. So we really learned about how important this was last year. I can say personally, being on the board, that I realized how important it was. We went through the process of actually recruiting Chris. We hired a company, you may recall, H Y A, and they bring expertise, and part of the expertise that they brought is advising us that we need to have a really solid goal-setting process, and that that should begin with a board retreat. Ideally, the board retreat happens over the summer time, in July or August. We managed to get our board retreat on, on September nineteenth this year, so we were a little bit late, which also explains why we're showing you these goals in December as opposed to September. So we had our, we had our retreat in September, and we had H Y A there to help us, and they provided us with a framework for talking about our goals. And, and we had a sort of freewheeling discussion about the district goals and about superintendent goals. And they also said the board should have goals, and I think this is something that's very new for every tenant. I'm not sure that the board has had goals in the past. And so we constructed our board goals as well. So we came up with three documents, three separate documents. And I'm going to take you through these three documents, again, for discussion and comment. I guess I am going to read them, even though they're long, if that's the idea. Chris is going to make me read them.
[laughing]
So the, the first document, because this is really the one that drives the others, is the, the goals for the district as a whole. And I want to point out that this is the document that really is owned by all of us, and it has not been an inclusive process to get to this document. And we apologize for that, because ideally, we would have set up a, sort of a system where people would contribute to it. But I think the important thing to note is that this is a document that evolves. These are the goals that we have set for ourselves this year, and they actually started with Bob's comments in August. For those of you who were with us in August, we, Bob said, there are three things that we should try to accomplish this year, and the, and the board largely agreed with those. And now just curriculum, focusing on curriculum, the fields initiative, which we've been talking about for the last three months, and then also the Main Street School situation, which is really doing a thorough analysis of that space utilization study. So those are three things that Bob started us off with in August. And these goals, as we talked about them in our retreat, are kind of derivative of where Bob started us off with. The Main Street School and the, and the field goals sort of got combined into a facilities goal, but the curriculum goal stands alone. And then we added a third goal, which I'll describe in just a minute. So I'm going to read these for the benefit of people watching on television. Curriculum and instruction goal, use the work that will be required to implement common core curriculum standards to accomplish the following outcomes. Creating and implementing differentiated curricula that use data and best practices to challenge each student to meet his or her potential. Enhancing the culture within the school district and at each school to ensure that students are actively engaged in reaching their potential, and highly motivated by the learning opportunities presented to them. That's the second part of that first goal. The third part is establishing consistent expectations for learning experiences and curriculum delivery across all classrooms within a grade level, or all sections of the class at the middle school and high school levels. So there's a, that third one is consistency of expectations, what the learning experiences would be. The second point is enhancing the culture within our district overall. And the first point was creating and implementing different curricula that use data and best practices to help each student. And the idea is that every student, every day, right, Chris? Heard that?
Yes.
The facilities goal, the second goal, is to evaluate the current conditions of the athletic fields, and to take necessary steps to provide adequate practice and competition fields for the athletic programs offered at the middle and high school. And again, I'm wrapping the middle school project that we talked about as part of that facility school, pardon me, I think I said middle school, I meant Main Street School. But that clearly embodies the athletic fields initiative that we've been talking about for the last three to four months. And then finally, we have a long-range planning goal, and this is important, because we have certainly talked about the need for more long-range planning in our district. Create and begin to implement a process of determining long-range plans for the school district with a focus on the following initial steps. Reviewing and refining the mission and vision of our district. We do have a mission, and I'm not sure if I see the vision, but I know we have a mission statement, and we want to revisit that with Chris's arrival. Evaluating the current and future financial health of the school district. Establishing a format and a process to assess the cost-benefit factors related to program and services. And defining infrastructure components that need to be evaluated and planned for including such items as safety, security, technology, and space considerations. So all of those are components of a long-range planning process. And I think the most important thing about setting this goal is that this is not a goal that we are going to achieve in its entirety in two thousand twelve, thirteen. This is a long process. We want to start this process, get it moving, and really begin the effort to set this process forward. We do not have time to complete this process before June this year. It's, it's too big of a process. And, but just because it's a big process doesn't mean we shouldn't start it. And we really want to start this process in this, in this school year. So those are the three goals. The, again, the long-range- The, again, the long-range planning goal is really the sort of new addition to the goals that we talked about back in August. Those are the district goals. The board goals are our goals for ourselves, and they really have a lot to do with the way we work and the way we communicate. They're obviously not involved in, really not about instruction or things that teachers do or administrators do. These are how we work together and how we work with the community. So they're kind of process-oriented goals. So the first one is board meeting procedures goal. Establish board meeting procedures with the desired outcome of building trust with the community by making a commitment to transparency and sharing the rationale behind decisions, providing opportunities for meaningful engagement with community members on important issues that occupy, that occur. Yeah, I got cut off on mine. Prior to the board making the decision, informing the administration on what information is needed for decision-making, sharing a process by which community members can have questions answered, and allowing the board to conduct board work in a meaningful and productive manner. And I think that last goal actually really summarizes the need for having a board meeting procedures goal because it's our job to make important decisions for the district and not to get bogged down in things that are unimportant. And that in order to do that, we have to be productive, we have to be efficient. That's partly why we introduced the consent agenda last year, but that really explains the board meeting procedures goal. Then there is a professional development goal for us. We as board members need to improve constantly, especially because we are laypeople and not experts in education or experts in being on boards. We need to constantly get better. So we have a professional development goal, and that is focus time and attention on professional growth of board members by establishing an induction and mentoring program for new board members. Again, that's a best practice that we learned from HYA. I don't believe we've had a mentoring program in the past, and as the newest board member for yet, probably would like to have a mentoring program.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I did not have one last year, so we would like to establish that this year for incoming board members next year. Participating in professional growth opportunities suggested by the superintendent or sought out by board members. That means going periodically to ISBA conferences and other local conferences at no cost in the district, I might add. Conducting a board self-evaluation in May or June of 2013. And again, we would like to be more self-reflective than we have been in the past, and that does mean actually answering a questionnaire, which we have not yet formulated, but a questionnaire that would help us understand whether we're doing a better job at our board process. And the idea is that that would occur at the end of our year, prior to the board, current board members leaving the board, but not so far beforehand that it doesn't, is irrelevant. So that's why it's in June 2013. And the last goal is hopefully one that we've been working hard on already, as I discussed in the last board meeting, and that's our communications goal. The board will make its business more transparent and improve its communication methods by using modern digital communications to share information with the district in timely fashion. These message methods will include a more regular, updated website, improved email communications, regularly updated Facebook page, and videotaped board meetings broadcasted on cable and also on YouTube. Providing adequate notice to the community for upcoming board agenda items. And lastly, hosting more frequent and formal meetings with the community members. So these are all the tools that we would like to use this year and in coming years to communicate more effectively with the board. So those are our three main board goals, again, largely around our process of doing a better job for the community. So finally, we come to the superintendent's goals, Dr. Chris Harrison. So this is a process that is actually mandated by our contract with Chris. You need to have a goal-setting process within a review process. I think it's also, is it a legal matter too that the superintendent has to be reviewed?
Yeah, evaluated legally.
Exactly. So we would like to have had these done sooner, but at least they're done now. And we will sort of, now that we have these done, and we'll be approving them in two weeks, we will begin sort of a regular process of discussing with Chris how he's progressing against these goals. We decided to use New Jersey School Boards Association evaluation form. Chris actually shared it with us, and we liked it. We did look at some New York forms, but we prefer this particular rubric for doing his evaluation. And according to this methodology, each board member separately fills out an evaluation form that is then ultimately aggregated together to form a single evaluation of his goals. And there are two parts to that. One is the specific goals, which we'll talk about in a minute, and the other is overall leadership skills. And that's very similar to private sector and American Express where I work. We have very specific goals that are often metrics-based, and then we have qualitative goals that are leadership-based, and we actually get a G-rating and L-rating as part of our process. So this is actually quite similar to what I've seen in the private sector. So the process is, is that once we, once we have these forms aggregated, completely share them with Chris, and then at the end of the year, we have a discussion with him about how he's done with these goals. We will also have an interim discussion with him, which will be happening shortly. He'll provide us a mid-year status report. And importantly, the superintendent's goals are public, but not the evaluation because that's part of his personnel rep. Now, to the goals themselves, there are three different goals. One is instructional leadership. This is all part one. These are the specific goals that we will be commenting on. Instructional leadership, district infrastructure goal, and personal leadership goal. So the first two actually sound similar to our district goals, and that's by design because the district goals kind of govern on a higher level what we're aiming for, and then his goals are obviously something that he's working on on behalf of the district. So the instructional leadership goal is the superintendent will lead, and these are quite long, excuse me for being verbose here. The instructional leadership, the superintendent will lead the administrative team in the enhancement and advancement of curricular programs for the district. To achieve this goal, the administration team will establish a cohesive team focused on database decision-making consistently and use of best practice and a culture of customer service. Provide informational presentations at our meetings that include examples of current practice and desired improvements. Facilitate parent presentations and workshops to enable parents to be supportive partners in their children's education experience. Share relevant resources with the community in person meetings, district website, and district Facebook page, with the result that the community is well-versed on critical education topics. Organize agenda-driven informal meetings in each school community to discuss current educational topics and the efforts that the Irvington Public Schools are making to address those issues. Lead the board and community in discussions to establish long-term curricular priorities for the school district. District infrastructure goal says, the superintendent will deploy a concise and future-focused vision to guide and prioritize decision-making related to district infrastructure. To achieve this goal, the administration team will provide an assessment of the technology infrastructure, evaluate opportunities for energy conservation, review safety and security at district facilities, analyze and provide recommendations regarding future facility meaning building grounds needs, develop a methodology to systematically evaluate costs and benefits of various programs and services, and outline financial priorities and constraints within the context of budget. And lastly, he has a personal leadership goal, which has to do with the hiring of our principals and the way that he will be leading our administrative teams and our teachers across the district. Personal leadership goal reads, develop hiring protocols for administrative openings and hire high school and middle school, Main Street School principals. That's obviously a very important place in our principals. Provide leadership for administrators through professional development modeling. Work to achieve teaching excellence across the district by ensuring resources are optimized and learning opportunities are continually enhanced and improved. Foster a staff commitment to excellence in student performance and preparation for their future. Those are Chris's part one goals. The part two goals, I'm not going to read in their entire line, because that would lead us into past midnight. These are leadership standards that we have agreed with Chris. Our standards that are important for our superintendent to live and to model and to own. So there are general responsibilities. There is an instructional leadership goal. Actually, I'll read the top line. The general responsibility standard is the superintendent is the educational leader, promotes the success of all students, and ensures the smooth operation of the district. The second one is instructional leadership. Develops and promotes instructional programs designed to optimize student program and staff achievement. The third is personal administration. Provides oversight for comprehensive human resources program, including retirement, retention, staffing, organization, and development. Fourth is financial management. The superintendent manages budget development, implementation, and monitoring process that reflects district goals. And the fifth is communication, community relations, and ethical leadership. Establish effective communications, not only with students, staff, and parents and board, but also with the community as a whole. Promote a school-based climate of tolerance, acceptance, and civility. So these are the five leadership standards that we will be evaluating Chris on in terms of how he's conducted himself in our community.
Thank you. I must say, I have not yet watched one of our meetings on television.
That's going to be.
But that's remnant.
Yeah.
That's remnant. I tell you, it doesn't get any better than that. Are there any comments from the board about the goals, the process, what have you, anything to add that Phil did not have, Jim, anyone?
Well, just, I mean, I think, you know, we're definitely taking an active approach to being a little more formal this year, and I think it's going to be a little bit organic. And I think things are going to change, and what we have at the beginning of the year might not be what we have at the end of the year, or we might figure out what he's going to improve with the process for next year. But I think it's actually a great beginning, you know?
Yeah. My personal hope is that this goal framework that we've established will work itself into the upcoming budget discussions. I think with the continual pressure the 2% tax cap puts upon us, it's time for this district to stop looking on a yearly basis as to what we need to cut to solve for an arbitrary number, and rather look to what we want this district to be over the next 10 years. You know, we've had an amazing turnover of houses in Irvington recently, and I've made it my, my goal to get out and meet as many of the new people as possible, mainly to find out, why have you moved here? And it was interesting, a lot of these people have used relocation services, as soon as there have been a lot of people moving to California for some reason. And I could tell you that it's not the aqueduct or the walkaduct, as my daughter says. It's not the rivers, it's not the trees in Irvington. It's probably what we take for granted the most, and when I say take for granted, I mean that in a positive sense. It's what we come to expect, which is the high level of our schools. I mean, to the family, the people I've talked to have moved to Irvington because of the schools. So that, to me, will be, you know, I'll keep that in my mind as we approach the budget and as we approach priorities, and ask that we all consider these goals in light of what we review on behalf of Chris and Bev when they propose a budget, but ultimately what we bring to the community to vote on. Let's see, I guess, yeah, now, are there any comments from the community for things that are not on the agenda? Okay, does the board have anything we'd like to add at this point? The meeting notification, I think we were throwing around the date of December 20th. It's actually December 18th. Tuesday, December 18th is the next week, not the 20th. Whoops. Was that you?
That was me.
Okay. So, yeah, it's the 18th of this month. We'll see you all then. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.